Good, okay. I'm looking past you.
It's 10 o'clock.
All right, it's 10 o'clock. Welcome everybody to the September 12th staff meeting workshop. With that.
Three things, yeah, three things today, Chairman. Chief Lannerman is here with his staff to talk about and kind of give a review and update of the Grow Your Own program that EMS has been running for a couple of years now. Tanya will give an update on the psych hospital process and project. I think Tim's going to start us up by introducing a new department head, though, so.
Aaron, go ahead and stand up. In case you haven't met him yet, this is Aaron Bailey. He is the new park superintendent. We've got six weeks under the belt right now. He came to us from the zoo as the construction and maintenance manager there, and so he's embedded himself quickly and he's learned a ton, so I'm really glad to have him.
Welcome, Aaron.
All right, Chief. Kevin, you're up.
Actually, Angela and Brian are up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Angela. I'm sorry, Angela.
Good morning, Angela.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Manager, Staff. I'm Angela Hamilton, the Deputy Chief of Operations for Sedgwick County EMS, and I'm here today to just kind of give you an update and overview of our Grow Your Own, otherwise known as the E2P, EMT-to-Paramedic Program. Back in January of 2022, the Commission graciously allowed us to start growing our own paramedics. We asked for expansion of that program from six to, I think we ended up with 10 at that time in August, and have continued to add three each cycle of the college semesters that start. We had a discussion with Tom and Rusty earlier this year, or just a couple of months ago, on continuing this program and kind of giving you some updated budget numbers which you have in front of you. But we've had seven successful graduates from the program that are working full-time for us and have signed a three-year agreement with us. We have seven more graduates that will come out of the program this December, three more next May, and three more next December. So we are very, very blessed in our area to have two robust paramedic programs. There's only five paramedic programs in the entire state. Two of them are located within minutes of Sedgwick County. So we have one in Wichita, one in Winfield, and then one through Hutchinson Community College in Newton. So Western Kansas doesn't have any. We have a very good pipeline for medics in our area with these two programs. Each of the programs vary in length from 12 to 16 to 18 months, so kind of the management side of that gets a little bit tricky because they start at different cycles. They start on the semester, so they either start in January or August, and then some programs go through the 18 or 16-month program, and some of them are done in 12 months. So it's kind of a juggling act, not only budget, but just management-wise, to make sure that all of our employees are successful. Interest in the E2P program has spread throughout the EMT classes. We have brought on several new EMTs that have expressed interest in this program to go to paramedic school. We have current tenured EMTs that have started in the program, and without this program, they would not have been able to facilitate the schooling. So, you know, these are, these are non-traditional students that have been in the workforce for a while, that have families, that have obligations financially, that can't afford not to work full-time and receive benefits. So this has, like, been tremendous in allowing them to, to, to complete paramedic school in a situation that they wouldn't normally be able to. We have also discovered through the colleges that most students in paramedic programs are sponsored by their organizations. So because we have the two locally, we have people coming down from Salina that are sponsored by Salina Fire, Great Bend, all of the other agencies are sending their paramedics, so it's kind of the standard now to be sponsored through that program. Our program, though, is unlike any of the others that we've been able to research in the state by providing them a full-time wage and then allowing them the time off to complete classes, clinicals, and their field internship. It's been sort of a growing situation for us. We didn't know what to expect because we hadn't done something like this before. Budget-wise, I think that we, we put, we put more people through more quickly than what we had anticipated to kind of maintain that 185,000 that you had approved originally per year. We've decided operationally that we can't afford to have this many people off of our operations schedule, so we've, we've made some tweaks to the programs. We're following up with each of the programs to find out how we're doing, if there's anything that we can improve as employers, if the students are set up for success. But operationally, six, I think, is, is our max limit any given 12-month timeframe. So I, we can't say that it's the budget cycle from January to December because of the way that the programs fall, but any 12-month period, six total participants. Backfill costs vary. We've made some changes to how we schedule these employees to get more employee input or more employee accountability and responsibility to schedule them as opposed to them just filling in the holes, and we now have a better picture of what some of those backfill costs are. One thing we would like to do is consider the term agreement increased to five years. Statistically, five years is where we tend to lose people between that three- and five-year mark. If we can retain them for five years, the chances of us growing them within the organization through promotions will help with retention. Our next process, we don't anticipate bringing anybody on until summer of 2024, so August of 2024, that'll be the last of our, that'll be when the last three drop off the program and allow for three more to enter into the program. We have a couple of photos here. One of them is our first graduating class. We were able to, I say snag, but we were able to recruit some other EMTs or other paramedic students to come and work for us full-time, which we're very grateful for. And then on the backside is our most recent Hutch class that graduated. We actually have a graduation tonight for one of our E2P students, along with two of our part-time employees that we were able to bring on full-time. So overall success as far as pipeline has been, has been great. Brian can talk about numbers if you have questions about numbers, but I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, Angela, for the summary. Any comments or questions at this time?
Commissioner Howe. Thank you, just, thank you for the update. I'm trying to remember now the, the paramedic shortfall we had at the beginning of this program. How many paramedics were we short then? What's our current status?
24 was back in January of 2021. We are currently down 18 positions. We've had kind of a, not a mass exodus, but we've had some attrition through either leaving the state or leaving careers over the last few months, but we were staying steady right around 13 to 14 openings.
And does this count any of the students that have not actually received their final credentials as a paramedic?
It does count those.
And how many is that?
It will be seven...13?
So we're, we have an improvement of about six, but includes 13 of those, 13 people are not fully credential as paramedics are in the school program.
Seven, seven will graduate this December. That's, that's our biggest group, and then after that, it'll be three, groups of three.
Thank you. Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you for the update. The, is that a policy change if we move it from three to five years on contract? What do we need to do to make, I think that makes sense. What do we need to do to?
It would just, it would just go through the on-base process for your approval to increase those terms.
Do we have a timeline on when we want to accomplish that? Is that something you feel we need to have some urgency on?
We actually would like to start that process now so that we can be prepared for next year.
That makes a lot of sense. I'm trying to think about the financial incentive for this program, the EMT to a paramedic. Can you give me the starting wage of an EMT?
1541 per hour, something around.
And then paramedic?
1581.
1581. Oh, here it is, right here. I see it. 1581 on an EMT. What's a paramedic starting wage?
20...yeah, I don't, I don't.
That's okay.
Kevin probably knows.
Sheena, email it to me.
Adjusted after.
Adjusted after?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Sheena, would you mind emailing me that when you have it or let us know? Obviously, there's an incentive for these individuals to get into this program and to, a financial incentive for their family. Okay. I think this is great. Appreciate the update.
I'm Brian Nicholas, Deputy Chief for Admin. I just wanted to add one, one point to what Angela said. Like I say, it's been a very successful program. These are all, these are already full-time employees, so basically if they entered the program, we're just talking about the additional budget impact of tuition fees and backfill costs. And so basically for a five-year commitment, which we're hoping to change to a five-year commitment, it's $32,000 to $33,000 of additional budget impact to enter that program. And so as we move forward, settling at six annually, that's, that's definitely our goal. On the spreadsheet that you see, we actually track it different ways, obviously, like Angela mentioned, where the programs span multiple budget years. So we're tracking it per the budget year to help with payroll so they can track benefits, and that's the spreadsheet I have in front of you. And then also, there's a, the summary for the total program, and that's where we get the $32,000 to $33,000 for an entire program. But like she mentioned, it's, can span multiple budget years, but they have to track it for payroll purposes as far as the benefits.
That's helpful data. So we're moving to a two-paramedic model. Is this the one program that's the biggest catalyst that's going to help us accomplish that? Do you see this as the program that is?
Absolutely, I agree. In fact, our, our decision package was to have those 10 EMT positions, which is going to be the pool by which we can really bet out the best that would be successful in this program moving forward. So the goal is to have that pool of 10 to draw from for this program moving forward. We're not wanting more than 10, and so this will be the great way where we can bring these employees on board, evaluate them, and determine who is the best to move forward.
Wonderful.
And, and just to add what Angela said, I mean, there's some great stories about these folks that didn't see an opportunity to become paramedics, and now just presented it to them, so it's, it's really great to see.
It's a great investment into our staff.
To add on to the dual-paramedic, so we do host paramedic school students during their FI, which is around five to 540 hours of field internship. We're the largest agency in the state. This semester alone, we have 12 to 14 paramedic students writing as third person with our crews, and they are required to be precepted by a paramedic. So while the EMT is still part of the team, the paramedic is vital to, to continue that pipeline for students and, and recruitment that aren't our current EMTs.
Commissioner Beatty, the paramedic wage is 2251. 2251 currently.
Thank you, Sheena.
Yes, of course it is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. From your staffing chart, it looks like we're still 18 paramedics short right now, and you've got 15 EMTs. As we move through this, I can see that you could have an operational issue if trying to staff your ambulances, if we pull too many of those EMTs out and put them into school. So I, I fully understand the six in school, but as we keep moving up in, in the number of paramedics and the number of opening position, open positions of paramedics draws down, is there a chance of getting more of the EMTs then, since you're going to be staffed with two paramedics into schools so that we, I guess, bottom line is, is the decision to eventually not have EMTs once we're fully staffed on paramedics, or where are we going?
I, I think EMTs are important to the system because it allows us to grow from the ground up in that certification. The 10 positions that we would have would be just part of our staffing table. We would like to continue this program in some, some fashion, some way. I don't know what that looks like, you know, two to five years from now, but EMTs do have a place in our system, but the majority we would like to see is, is dual-paramedics on our tracks. Just for...
Back to the original part of the question, then, as we get more paramedics on board as these graduate, can we get more than six EMTs into the school so that you can get to the full paramedic sooner?
If, if the budget was granted for us to add more, we would look at it. We want to be cautious about it, though, because there, there potentially could be a hit to our operational, current, current staffing if we pulled them off of a current unit as opposed to just bringing them in.
I understand the operational aspect, though. You all are going to have to figure that out, but as far as the funding for that, we can figure that out.
Yeah, we, we...
I don't have a problem with us solving that.
We'd be very grateful for any additional funding for, for personnel to, to enter the program.
Okay, thank you.
Just to speak to that briefly, the spreadsheet you have in front of you, whenever this program started in January of '22, originally it was, one portion of this was to take people off the street and train them to be EMTs, which we didn't have a need for because EMTs have, we have a pipeline. So this was focused primarily on paramedics, getting EMTs trained up to the paramedic level, getting their degree so that they could be paramedics and get licensed as paramedics. We came back to you in '22 and, and talked to you about allowing more than the six original, and that's what they did. They were aggressive in year one. In 2022, they were aggressive, and they ended up having 15 in class. And what, what was learned through that is, it's about $9,500 per student for fees and enrollment, and then the backfill cost. Whenever those people are in class, if they're scheduled for shifts, somebody has to backfill them. And that's where on the spreadsheet you see that they used 185,000 that was authorized through the budget process, and then ultimately they used about 100, the first year they used about 120,000, or, yeah, about 120 more, 120,000 more of salaries, what was in salary savings, or it was budgeted money, is what it ended up costing, about $300,000 is what it cost first year. In year two, where they still had that many people and added three more in January, it's going to be about another $300,000 this year total, 185-plus to get these people through. So they were looking to be a little more conservative for staffing purposes, but then also looking for commission approval to be aggressive and spend more than 185, whether that means adding more to the budget or simply allowing them to use their budget authority that already exists. What I'm hearing you say is that you support being more aggressive if it helps them fill those positions faster.
I think, I don't know that anyone on the commission would not support being more aggressive. I think this is important. We told you that, you asked if we could go to two paramedics, we have to get there somehow, and if it costs us a little bit more to get there, I don't have a problem with that.
And we would just want, we would just want Brian and staff to keep close track of what they're spending so that finance can budget for, the budget, House can budget for them. Yeah. So that kind of guidance is helpful for us to think about what we do in 2024 and 2025 as we watch staffing levels.
Any other comments? Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. So we have a metric that, I don't see it on the dashboard, but how are we doing with our, our non-emergency transports in less than one hour? Is that, what's the status of that currently?
So the, the previous quarter, we fell short of our city agreement. There was some nuances with the changeover of CAD and some growing pains the first few weeks that calls, I don't want to say got lost, but there was just some, some workings to get the new CAD up. I can get you the most current numbers, but we typically don't look at those until the end of the quarter.
So that was just a single quarter where we didn't meet the metric?
Yeah.
When's the last time? Which quarter? Going backwards, has it been quite a long time?
It has been. I want to say back in 2021, 2020, that we didn't meet our metric.
And my other concern, one reason we supported this program, I think, was because, again, we, I think, recognized lack of paramedics, lack of staff, actually, was a reason why we had a lot of Status III, Status II, Status I, and Status Zero calls. I don't see that on the dashboard either. How are we doing on those metrics?
We are still working on trying to track those metrics with the new CAD system. The system Marvelous that we use to track those events did not get interfaced because Tyler had promised, or had not promised, but had, had said that they could provide some of that data, so we're working closely with Alora and her staff to get those numbers.
May not be a fair question, but anecdotally, are we, are we hitting those statuses daily?
We are.
Status zero or two?
We're busy, yes.
And I think you are very busy, and again, so I, again, I'm concerned that, I don't like, I, this is a good program, a good program, I, I can tell you that. I don't want to spin this in a way that is overly positive or overly negative. I think that your status, your status today was good. Maybe restate it another way and tell me if I'm being unfair. Okay, so we were down 24 in, in January last year. This coming January will be two years. We'll have graduates in December this year, but after that's complete, we'll be down 18. Right now, currently, you're counting those 18, you're counting those 13 graduates, and if I don't count them...
We are.
Then right now, we're actually down 31.
And so we do...
That's actually worse than we were. Go ahead.
We do have some part-time employees that are not part of the program that work for us as a part-time, part-time EMT that we're hoping to bring on in December. I believe three positions will be filled. As, as, as we move forward, we're continuing to recruit, but the graduation that we'll attend tonight will have had three additional paramedics out of that class that we didn't have before. So we're, we're still actively recruiting those that are uncommitted.
I'll just say this, again, I, I think this program is, is obviously positive, but I don't think we're doing enough, and I don't know what we have to do differently.
Well, we, we would like to retain our employees. We would like to, you know, explore shift differential to help incentivize our employees to stay, want to promote into the system and go to night shift, work the weekends and holidays. We, we want to be employee-centric as we move forward in this next year to truly try to make a, a healthy environment for our employees that they want to stay.
And I, I think that's, those are good ideas. I guess I'd like, I'd like to ask my person, my personally, I would love to see our management delve into this even further and find out if, if those are the, those are the best ideas or there's other things we can do that need, need to be understood better by commissioners. I, I don't personally understand exactly what else is causing this to really stagnate in terms of trying to get this back on its feet. I don't think we're there, and I think that to know we have, we're hitting Status Zero daily is just not a good, you know, going way back, that was an unusual event. Now it's, now it's, we're getting used to it, and I don't think that's good. So I, I, no, we've, we've been aware of some problems in EMS for a number of years. We've, we've done some things to fix, oh, we've done a lot of changes in EMS to, to address some of the crisis, but I would still label this as a crisis status personally. I think we're still in crisis, and so we need to do something to address that. And again, given this couple of years, this program, although it's positive, hasn't proven to actually solve the problem. Thank you. Okay.
I would like to tell on the status events. We're, we're not giving status events daily. We're getting down to status events daily. Kevin Lannerman, EMS Chief, we are hitting status events daily, down to Status III to, I don't believe we're hitting Status Zero daily. We are still getting down low, and we would love to get those figures and that data for you when we can get that. It's, it's been kind of a frustrating process for us also not to, not to have those numbers, but as soon as we can get those numbers, we will obviously get those to you.
Thank you, Chief. I'll just say, there is one slide that talks about response time, and again, I, I don't see how I can quantify the, the graphic there very well, but again, it, I think it does show that our response times are probably what we like. I think our staff is tired. It's, I think, I talk about retention, one of the reasons they might be leaving is they're just fatigued. They're just tired of being so over, maybe overworked. It's not just a salary problem. I think that we have a staff quantity problem. I know you guys are trying to address it with this program, but we need to do, I think we need to do more because, again, the, the statuses you're referring to get down to a lack of people. The slow response times is lack of people. People may be leaving because of lack of people. Now, again, this, this is a step in the right direction, but until we solve the, the number of people we have in, in the organization, curiously, what's our, what's our deficit in terms of open positions right now?
Total open positions?
No, we, we would love to fund, you know, we have a full department, but how many positions are we down currently in whatever positions, EMTs or paramedics? How many are we down currently?
Should be.
Yeah, 18 field staff positions.
That's, that's the total.
That's the total. We, there is, we do have two vacancies in our administration that we've, we've delayed filling just for the purpose because we typically promote from the, from the field. One of those positions we hope to fill by the end of the year, but the other one will...
All right. I guess, just, Chair, I have concerns, and I, and I, I've had concerns for a long time, and I was hopeful that we would be better, in a better position today. And again, know the way you give the count to us, 13, it does sound better, but I'm, I'm not sure that's a fair assessment. We need to understand that fully. Thank you.
Chief, Angela, thank you. I, side comment is on the word crisis. A few years ago, I used to receive a handful of emails periodically from people having experience of what may support a crisis comment. I've not received any, anything in the last year or so, so I think whatever you're doing is making positive steps towards the right, towards the right deal, so.
And in fairness, I've not heard that comment from staff either. That's my own comment.
Okay, all right.
We, we appreciate that. Our crews work very, very hard at what they do to provide that service to the community.
Right, okay.
One final comment. Thanks for everything you do. We appreciate it. Thanks for the update. I am concerned that our contract with the city of Wichita is going to expire next year, and we need to start working at early enough that we don't have any kind of a break in that contract.
Absolutely.
Mention it to Rusty and to Tom in the past. Need to start forming that committee like we had five years ago to make sure that we continue that contract.
Chairman, if I may, one question. Mention the city of Wichita. You see Wichita Fire is going to do an EMT, a paramedic program of some sort. Do you estimate that's going to have an impact on our department?
You're talking about their, their first response program?
Yeah.
They're changing the model, the way they do their first response. It, it could, in the fact of, you know, they are looking to hire like 30 EMTs for those positions. Like Angela said, we're, we have a pretty good pipeline of EMTs right now to staff, but, you know, they are offering a higher rate of pay than, than we offer our, our full-time people. So we may lose some, some EMTs and maybe some of the more tenured EMTs that we, we do lose to that program. Overall, I think we have a meeting this afternoon with them, but I think if it's done right, it will help, help the, the system as far as medical response. We just don't know enough about it yet to, to see what it's going to do, but they have asked us for input, and we've been trying to give them input on how to improve the system, so.
Good to know. Okay. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
I have gifts.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Should I light weapons? Yes. No, I didn't have to. Thank you.
I will say, we're, we're aware of what's going on with Wichita Fire and their EMT pilot program, and we have plans to address that so that we don't lose EMTs in the short term, and then Sheena is looking at a longer-term solution for that, but Mr. Stolson and I have talked about this, and we brought Sheena in, and we don't intend to lose EMTs to, to City Fire, so.
And I'm going to make this comment also, a couple things. Commissioner Howe's assessment of crisis is, goes past EMS. This is not a Sedgwick County Wichita thing. This is a national issue with paramedics and hospital ERs and management, even locally here via Christian Wesley, with nursing staff and staff that works in emergency areas. It is tough right now. It is a service-related industry that is hard. It is demanding. It is physically challenging. So it's not, it's past Sedgwick County EMS. It's, it's a bigger crisis than that on a national level that we have to pay attention to and address as we can. I want to thank this group, this group of four back here managed this. It sounds easy, this Grow Your Own thing. It is tough to manage that budgetarily and, because it's not like a traditional college semester where they start and stop. It is constant, ongoing, and they're doing an excellent job of keeping us aware and managing this to, to the best they can. And I, and I appreciate the budgetary flexibility to let them be aggressive to, to fill these chairs. To Commissioner Dennis's point, ultimately, the end game is to have enough paramedics where you're not having to grow your own anymore. That we have a full staff of paramedics that relieve the burden on the existing paramedics who are tired. They're working hard. It's a hard job. So I think that is the ultimate goal, and we know there's going to be a transition time to get there, though, and that's what we're playing for now with this Grow Your Own program. But it's the whole concept, it's the same...
But it's the whole concept, it's the same things we always talk about. It's pay, it's their equipment, it's their environment, it's how they're managed, and it's, via Christie's facing the same thing with their nurses and their ER staff. Wesley's faced the same thing. So has St. Louis, so has Dallas, so has Tulsa. So, this is an interesting discussion, and this field is very challenging, and I know they get into schools, too. I know they're out in high schools, and I know they're working with kids because ultimately you have to entice people into this type of valuable work, so.
I need to ask more questions, but my question on how many we're down, so by answer that question, sounds like we're full up on our EMT count. Well, we have as many EMTs as we feel like we need right now.
I'm going to defer to Kevin, but I think so. I think.
Coming back up, I think, potentially. I'm sorry to do another bite at the apple here, but.
Can you ask that question?
So, in terms of our desire to have a number of EMTs, the EMT FTE count, we're full up on employees to fill those positions?
We only have, well, it depends on how you look at our staffing table. We just redid the staffing table to align with what we have. Our goal is to have 10 EMT positions, and we have more than 10 in the system right now.
So, along that line, I thought this program initially also identified people without any credentials and turned them into EMTs by providing training. Does this not include a zero to EMT component of this education program?
It did not. EMTs, there's 20 EMTs to every five paramedics in class.
Curiously, if we wanted to hire more EMTs, are they out there?
Yes.
I'm just curious why we don't.
We had 40 applicants this last.
Just as a short-term solution to our staffing challenge, again, if EMTs can fill our shortfall of paramedics, I know, I agree that two paramedics is our desire. If they can't find paramedics to fill those positions, I would rather hire an EMT in place of a paramedic as long as we can't find a paramedic to fill that spot. I'm just curious, and if we can find people that want to work for Sedgwick County for this wage, I think we have, we ought to be willing to accept some of those folks to help us.
I defer to Operations Chief Flatter.
We would welcome more EMTs in the system. However, the city-county agreement requires us to have a paramedic on every truck, so that limits us. If we could put two EMTs on a truck, obviously, that would solve some issues, but.
I agree. Okay, that is, so the really limitation is our getting down, so we're not even getting close to two EMTs or two paramedics on a truck. We're really struggling with the idea of having one paramedic on a truck, and that's really what's causing this.
Yes.
And are there places around the country that actually do operate with two EMTs?
There are.
I don't think it's a wonderful configuration. I just would, I would rather see, if we can't get the people to do what we really, if we can't find paramedics to do what we feel like is the best model, I would love to have people to just provide, if you will, a response of some sort that maybe not exactly what we like, but at least it's in that direction.
The other thing, having, filling our staffing table with EMTs is if we are full and this December, we have three or four paramedics that out of this class want to hire on that aren't affiliated, we don't have the positions for those paramedics. So, we have to be careful that we don't, like she said, oversaturate with EMTs and not have open positions for the paramedics also that want to come in. If we have people that apply and want to come on board, then we have to have those positions also, so.
Could you talk a little bit about the part-time paramedics? How many you have and how you utilize those to?
And we do have quite a few part-time paramedics. We actually have, it's, I know she spoke to it recently, our, we've had a number of folks that have transitioned from full-time to part-time here recently for whatever reason. We haven't lost paramedics that we know of in the last number of months to other EMS services. They're going to law enforcement, they're moving out of state, they're making decision, family decisions to go part-time, things like that, that, like she said, we had gotten down to like 12 or 13, but here recently, we've had some of those things. So, we're trying to take into account what we could have done to, you know, keep those people and retain them, but some of those things are just life decisions that they made that we've talked to them. It wasn't about the organization, it wasn't about, you know, what was going on here. But I'm sure to speak to your point earlier about being tired, things like that, with our call volume is still increasing. I mean, it's still, I mean, we're doing more, and we don't anticipate that going down anytime soon, so. But with the salary adjustments that have been made, with things like she talked to about trying to make their work environment better, just knowing that they're appreciated, that what they do on a daily basis does make a difference, that does go a long ways to retaining those employees. I'm sure there's more we can do, and we're certainly going to try to do that whenever we can, so.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other comments? I don't see any. Thanks again for the update.
We'll move ahead with the five-year contract. Did you want to comment on that at all, Justin? I think that's a good play.
Sure, I'd be happy to comment on that, Tom. There was some comments about the possibility to extend the contract length to five years. Our office has looked into that, and we think that's permissible, so don't really have any legal concerns on that, but let me know if you have any questions.
Okay.
I think when we even originated it two or three years ago, we were walking between three and five, and Papouna at the time had recommended threes as more manageable. It's probably time to ramp that up.
All right. Tanya.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, I'm here to give you an update on the mental health hospital progress. So, just as a reminder, we engaged GLMV, who is partnering with Pulse Design Group out of Kansas City, to provide us with two deliverables on the mental health hospital, and that was for programming and schematic design. And so, real quick, I just want to go through who our team is. Again, that's GLMV and Pulse Design Group. That's our architectural group. On the state of Kansas team is Scott Bruner. He is the Kdad's Deputy Secretary, as well as Melinda Gall. She's the Kdad's Special Project Manager. Irina Yarominkah, she's the Kdad's State Hospital Commission Director of Hospital and Program Management. Lindsay Dinkle, who's the Kdad Superintendent from Larned State Hospital. Ashley Brerum, who's the Kdad Superintendent from Osawatomie State Hospital. And then, on the county team is Tim Kaufman, Andrew Dilts, Director of Facilities, and then, of course, myself, who have been working on this, and we have our first deliverable. And so, in front of you, I provided you with a packet. And so, on the cover sheet is the programming that they have completed, and so what I'd like to do on that is just go through the options of that. And so, to do that, what I'd like to do is go right to left, and so on option three, what you'll see there is, that is the patient count for just a 50-bed hospital. And so, on the bottom there, what I'd like to just go across is discuss the building square footage. So, for a 50-bed hospital, that alone, that's about a 70,000-square-foot building. For option two, then, what that provides us is a 50-bed hospital. However, that would provide us admin support if we were to expand that hospital in the future for 100 beds. So, that model would give us 76, a little over 76,000 square feet. Then, option one, that is for a 100-bed hospital, and that total gross square footage is a little over 111,000 square feet. Total acres, then, that they're recommending for a 100-bed hospital is required is nine acres, and then what they're recommending is a total of 11 acres to get that 100-bed hospital. And if you recall, what they basically asked us to do for this hospital was give us 50 beds, but with the ability to expand to 100 beds. So, I think what we're looking at, then, if we want to take this, you know, for looking at existing buildings or for vacant land, we'll want to look at between options two and three. We need to look for a building that's going to be at least a minimum of 76,000 square feet to at least 111,000 square feet with acreage, I would say, and I'm going to explain this, probably acreage of seven acres to 11 acres. Now, I'm back scaling to seven acres because we had a discussion last week that if we need to go two floors because we can only find acreage of seven acres, we have the ability to be able to do that. So, we want to look for acres probably between seven and 11 acres. So, let me just stop there and ask if you have any questions. The numbers that you see at the bottom there, where it talks about criminal units, 1410, or, excuse me, mine's, I changed mine. I caught a typo before. So, the criminal units, 1410, and acute units, 1412, those are basically your pods. So, those are your acute pods. That's a single pod of 14 patients, and then 12 patients criminal unit. That would be 14 patients and 10 patients. And then, again, 50 patients with support for 104, those are your single pods per, for patients, and then, again, support for 104. That means that they are basically setting that up so that you have the ability to expand, but we're making that facility have the admin support for the 100. So, let me just stop there and ask if you have any questions, and I'll keep moving on to the packet.
There's probably some questions, but I assume that you mentioned Scott Bruner and some Kdad's representatives, so although we are an integral part of getting this built, I assume they are having more input as about what the real requirements are.
Oh, I will tell you that they have about 95% of the input.
Okay, that's comforting.
Into the entire programming of this.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's why I named off who is part of this because these are the integral part of, as they go through the programming, they're asking the questions, they are explaining what the needs are for the entire hospital, yes.
Two questions. So, I guess that answers, my first question was who or how is the decision being made between option one or two, whether we're building a 50-patient with support for 104 or 104 out of the gate? It's basically a state decision, is that what you're, or the advisory committee will advise on that, or?
That's a great question. So, the go-to from the mental health, the special mental health hospital committee, they basically said, you need to have a 50-bed hospital, but it needs to be able to expand to 100. So, our go-to, to me, was the option of two and option one. I think what we need to do, our part, is, and that's part of your packet here, is this executive committee that was put together, and then the second piece on there is who's on that advisory committee. That, I believe, is who we need to run this by.
Okay.
And part of, part of our next steps is going to be getting the on-call as part of this, our on-call real estate broker, to look at what existing buildings are available as well as vacant land.
Okay.
And then, to me, that next step is to run that by this advisory committee to understand what options are out there so that they can understand, okay, here's what is available, here is if we go with option two, here's if we go with option one.
There's another consideration that I think that we, the county, need to be, needs to be top of mind, is what is the staffing needs for a 50-patient facility versus 104-patient facility? Do we have a model of what that looks like yet, of what, how many nurses, how many practitioners? Have they given us any?
And that's probably something that's going to have to come from Scott, and I think that's going to have to be explained to the executive committee, but that was also part of the programming piece. So, that is incorporated into the programming piece of the 50 beds and the 100.
Okay. I would just encourage us as quickly as possible to get those numbers because we need to start collaborating with our partners in the area so they know what we're going to be looking for, because we'll be robbing Peter to pay Paul on some of these instances, and we need our partners in the community to be aware of what we're going to be needing, so. Okay, very good. Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it, and I agree, and we've been talking about it with the Mental Health Association Coalition on staffing, building this building, and we can't staff it, it's going to be kind of a stick in the eye. But my other question is, it talks about a gym adding square foot. I've never heard of about the gym portion of it before, so that's new information for some reason to me. They're talking about having a gymnasium as part of the hospital?
Mm-hmm. That's part of the recreation. They currently have one in both the hospitals now, and so it's a matter of, I think, if the criminal side or the acute side have separate gymnasiums, or if that's something that can be shared between both of the sides. So, is it a scheduling, or do they have to have separate because of the two dualities between those two?
Okay. We've been talking about this for a long time, and I don't ever recall hearing about it yet, so.
One follow-up question. I'm sorry. How many people do we have sitting in the jail right now that are waiting on placement at Larned or Osawatomie? Do we have an idea?
I don't. I'd have to confer with the sheriff, but I'm sure it's dozens.
Okay.
I thought 50 to 60.
Yeah, that's my point. Yeah, that's kind of my thought, so. If we can get that number, I think it'd be helpful, just to have an understanding of what kind of pressure are we experiencing in our jail right now, what it would be relieving, but also, you know, have an indication of some sort of the Quad County or whatever area we're pulling from. I just, 50 beds, I mean, this balance between our need and our capacity to staff is going to be a really challenging balance, and sooner the better. We can jump on this thing. Thank you. Appreciate the update.
I have a question, too. Is this, is it possible if we find out that we need additional acute unit or not an additional criminal, or vice versa, that we can split that up? It doesn't have to be just 50 or 100. Could that be, could there be a variation between sort of five, or, I mean, is that a possibility?
So, if you look on the bottom here where it says flex 12 and 10, can you see that? There, it's kind of highlighted in green. So, the intent there is if those numbers kind of fluctuate between acute and criminal, they're looking into how they can manage that within those pods. So, in other words, if criminal goes up from 25 to 36, they would have a pod that kind of fluctuates, and acute goes down. So, they're trying to make that flexibility between those units.
That's good. Good question. Okay.
Okay, let me just jump into the second portion of your packet. So, they've met the programming deliverable. Now, what we're working on is the schematic, and so we're, we've just met on that first meeting, and so we continue to move on the schematic, and so we should be done mid-October with the schematic design. And then, Commissioner Beatty, you had a question that I kind of answered. So, our next steps then are, would be to engage our on-call real estate broker to kind of see what's out there for existing buildings as well as vacant land, and then, at the same time, what we'll want to do is do our RFP for design, and that would take us from design development all the way through construction administration. So, that's kind of where we're at, and then I did go through that second portion, but that is the executive order on the committee, Advisory Panel Committee, as well as who sits on that advisory panel, so.
Very helpful.
Happen to answer any questions, and I will also refer to Tim Kaufman and Andrew Dilts, who are here as well. I'm part of that team.
Commissioner Dennis?
I see the advisory committee, but they're not doing the things that you're doing, and so we have to have you, and we have to have procurement and a number of other people. So, who identifies all those, and how are we making sure that we got the right place of people in the right place at the right time in order to be able to move this forward? Because this advisory committee is going to take your recommendations and decide what to do with it. You're going to be the key to this, it seems, me, you, and Scott Bruner. I don't know how this works, because all the names I have are people that have, don't have the knowledge that you and everybody that works with you have.
Well, I can tell you that Tim and I are in constant contact with Scott Bruner, who is, you know, he's the one that's putting, he just put out information yesterday to the panel. So, I think that he is going to be in constant contact with the advisory panel, and we are working through with Scott to make sure that he is communicated on everything that we're doing. As I said, he's part of this process, so we are working through kind of the timeline, sharing with him, and so he should be communicating with the advisory panel to make sure that they are aware as we go through this process.
So, is this timeline that you've got, is that you, or is that the advisory panel?
This timeline that is put together here, that's working with the architect and the county team as well as the Kdad's team.
Yeah. That team, to me, is probably the most crucial in order to make sure that this thing happens and we have the funding in place at the right time in order to be able to build something. The advisory committee looks. The advisory committee looks to me like it's kind of an advisory committee.
Chairman? Yeah. Last question, sorry. Once those RFPs go out, we're going to start getting a lot of phone calls and questions. We had talked about having some sort of communication on a website, an update, FYI, you know, frequent asked questions. Are we still, is that still the plan, and what's the time? It's up. Go to our website more, don't it?
I think, I think what would make sense, I think we're briefing you on this today, I think it makes sense to update the website with this information. That's number one. And then, number two, when the advisory board hits the ground running here, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, this needs to be downloaded, and this is rehearsal for them. Tanya will go through the same process with them. There are state hospital administrators on that advisory board, and the county has five positions on there. So it's not like we're hitting people blind with something. These are people that are acclimated to a system that I think it's going to be a fairly short. And Scott's laid out a pretty aggressive timeline for the advisory panel with, you know, decisions being made as early as January of 2024, but it needs to happen that fast because we want a timeline of money, so.
Yep.
Well, we still, I know the first part of this, we struggled to get the money in place to be able to do that. Are we, is that easier to work with safety, get that money in, or can we just kind of roll that off?
Yes, so I think the, and I'm not going to term it right, was it a resolution or, okay, it was a resolution that was put in place last week. I think that helps, and we are constantly in contact with, like, as I mentioned, communicating with Scott. He is asking us, okay, at what point will you need funding? What, what will it be intended for? And so we're constantly having that communication with Scott, so he's aware. We just had a meeting, I think, last week with Scott Bruner and Melinda Gall, specifically to talk about the funding pieces of what's needed. So appreciate that question.
The only other thing I want to say on this, this, what we're talking about here today, and we've all had some contact with Via Christie and what's going on at St. John Campus, this does not solve that problem down there. This is a separate, we need this, we need this regionally, but it does not solve the problem that Via Christie and Wesley are seeing in their ERs with mental health and behavioral health issues coming, and that's a separate nut to crack, so. I think politically, there's been some comments made, well, this will solve the problem in Wichita. That's not going to solve those ER problems, so.
Any other questions, Sarah?
Okay. Thanks for the update. It's an exciting project. Very good. Anything else? Anybody electeds here? I don't see any. Okay. Anybody else have anything for the, for the panel this morning?
I do. Okay. So I became aware of a Facebook post regarding Kansas Policy Institute. I'd encourage, I'd like to send this to Tom and have you distribute this to the Commissioners, and also I'd like to develop a formal response to some of the, I think, bad data in that post. I think their data is actually flawed. In fact, they, they make an argument about spending per, per resident or per county, which I think is incredibly flawed. I think we need to develop, if you will, a, a fact-based response to some of the misstatements in that post. Second of all, I don't know who is interested in attending this, but I would like to attend the, there's a tax tour, it's going to be at the Temple Baptist Church in East Wichita, 11801 East Lincoln, Thursday night this week at 6:00 PM. And it's being put on by some of the members of the leadership in the Senate especially, and maybe in the House as well, as well as KPI plans on presenting to that. So I want to, I want to attend that, see what's being said, and potentially stand for questions, or maybe if they allow comments, I might, I might like to be ready to challenge potentially some of the false narratives that's coming out, so. Again, I'm incredibly proud of Sedgwick County, and I think that we're doing a very careful job of spending people's taxpayer money. And, and so, again, they're, the premise that we have a slush fund, and that's the word they use, if they were to fund LAVTR, I guess I'd like to challenge, challenge that. So anyway, with that, I want to make sure that people are aware of that opportunity, and if other Commissioners are planning to go, we might need to do an announcement potentially. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Being none?
Okay.
See everybody tomorrow. Okay. Thank you. Have a good day.